We call the meeting order. Mr. Trampy will lead us in the invocation and Mr. Benton in the pledge.
Father, we thank you for the glory of your creation and for all the blessings living in a nation where we can discuss and debate public issues without fear of reprival reprisal and for all the freedoms we enjoy. In your name we pray amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. First off on tonight's agenda is your consent agenda. May I have the floor computer please? Tonight's consent agenda, board members, consists of eight items, well nine items if you count the 6:01 PM quote. First, the approval of board amendments from April 26th. Next is approval of an award of a purchase order to Atlantic Emergency Solutions for fire apparatus equipment in the amount of $285,838.38. This is the lowest of 12 bids received for various apparatus and equipment that I would generally classify as things that go on a fire truck. Item four is approval of a contract with Black &amp; Veatch Corporation to provide professional engineering services. This is again one of our standard retainer engineer services agreements, so this is not for a specified project. This is for a, an agreed price for services on an as-needed basis. Next is approval of a contract at Tank Industry Consultants, Inc. to provide professional engineering services. This is again one of our standard engineering retainer agreements. Tank Industry Consultants does work specializing with storage tanks, including our water tanks. Item six is approval of a contract with Rommel Klepper &amp; Call L.L.P. to provide professional engineering services, another standard retainer engineering agreement. Next is reappointment of James A. Perkins, Jr. to the Transportation Committee, his term will expire May 24th of 2017. Next is revision to the fiscal policies, your fiscal policies, to reflect action taken by you on the Budget Stabilization Reserve at your May 10th board meeting. And finally, the last is approval of an event permit for the Spotsylvania movie, family movie night, special event. This is Friday, June 17th, 2016, here at Robert Lee Lee Elementary at Spotsylvania Courthouse. Gates open at 8 o'clock. Movie starts at dark and the movie is Minions. And that is your consent agenda.
Okay. Any, are there any items we'd like to pull? None do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Six yes with Mr. Ross not present. Next, Mr. Chairman, item for board discussion and action is appointment to the Germana Community College Board. There were two nominees or names put forward for this appointment, Reverend Shaw and Baron We certainly do. I apologize. Amy, has anyone signed up for public presentation?
Yes, sir. There are two citizens signed up to speak.
Oh, they certainly are. Then let me run through the public presentation guidelines. Public presentations are an opportunity for you to present matters you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from citizens to the board of supervisors. This is not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided sign-up sheet. Come to the lectern when your name is called. Clearly state your name, address, and voting district for our record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes to speak, or if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you'll have five minutes. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. And as always, written comments are welcome. Amy, who is the first speaker?
The very first speaker is Jenny Vida, followed by Delia Branham.
Hi, my name is Jenny Vida and I live in the city of Fredericksburg. I'm not sure what my voting district is, but it is the city. And I'm speaking on behalf of Branham Mechanical. I work for Branham Mechanical. We're a commercial heating and air company and we purchased a building on 8810 Courthouse Road about eight months ago. And as we feel we've been fighting while only able to stare at it from afar to get into it, we've had to pay for rent, facilities, while paying the mortgage, water, electricity, taxes, in conjunction with hiring not only a lawyer but a survey engineer to try and help us get into an office that we were excited about originally. After our second preliminary meeting and hearing about the grandfather clause, I had a renewed excitement about the prospect of moving into the office. I jumped through every hoop asked and could, or could, and to get in touch with the personnel that was responsible for being able to give me the information from the forestry department to find out when they moved in or moved out of the building and asked them to do a letter for me on letterhead, which they did. It was discussed once the forestry department stated that they did not move out until 2015, that we were well within the timeframe that we would fall under the non-conforming use. The forestry department commenced in the early 60s, well before the adoption of the county's first zoning ordinance. I understand that this is not your typical non-conforming use situation, but the county's tax records show its zoning as R2, but describe it as commercial. I don't believe that anyone would move into it, as there's not even a kitchen there. But yet the county is charging real estate tax for the structure and value the structure at $177,300. I don't believe that it would make any sense to prevent the reuse of the building by a commercial user who is private rather than public. The planning commissioner is allowed to recommend for a special use if it satisfies several factors to include that the proposed use or development of the land will be in harmony with its surroundings in which it's located, would not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, or impair the value thereof, would not affect the health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood, would not be detrimental to the public welfare to the property. All of that would stand true for our company. A non-conforming use may be changed to a permitted use or a special use for the zoning district in which the property is located. The zoning administration is also able to grant a modification from any provisions contained in the zoning ordinance if they find that the modification will not be substantial or detrimental to adjacent property and the character of the zoning district would not be changed by the granting of the modification. There are several buildings around Spotsylvania that are vacant or listed as build-to-suit. In the meantime, there are several new businesses opening up practically on every corner. I've lived in this area since I was in middle school. My family moved here from Northern Virginia to get away from the traffic. Although I agree that we as a community must grow, there must be something to say about a family-owned business right here in the community. All we want to do is have a business right here in our own community that we can be
Mark, could you look into that for us and just get back and?
I have actually sent a text message to appropriate staff while the speaker was speaking and will be pursuing this and I'll report to the board separately.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm a little bit nervous tonight, but bear with me. I haven't done a public speech since I graduated from high school, so. My name's Delia Branham. I'm talking on behalf of Branham Mechanical. I live at 9627 Logan Heights Circle and I live in the Livingston District. I married to Ted Branham, the owner of Branham Mechanical, a local heating and air conditioning company. We primarily service commercial clients in Spotsylvania County in Northern Virginia. We have five employees, no customer traffic due to our serving commercial customers, a small number of deliveries and vendor traffic weekly, not causing undue traffic hazard or congestion. On September 18th, 2015, my husband purchased 8818 Courthouse Road, the old Virginia forestry building. Since that time, we've pursued moving our business into the building, but zoning, which is R2, has become our limitation. We've had two preliminary zoning meetings, paid for the guidance of an attorney, Ms. Deborah Ray Carnes, and a site engineer, Mr. Nolan Donahue. After the last meeting, two members of the zoning board, Mr. Leon Hughes and Mr. Doug Barnes, informed us that we may qualify for a non-conforming variance for the building. This would help us for go-spending tens of thousands of dollars, but we would have to obtain proof from the forestry department that the building was used within the last two years. We obtained proof from Mr. Joe Schaefer, a manager with the Department of Forestry in Charlottesville. Unfortunately, Mr. Troy Tigner, zoning director, rejected the notion due to dissimilarities between the two businesses, noting that the forestry department used bulldozers and boats as work vehicles and we use passenger vans as work vehicles. At this point, we ask for help with this issue. The Department of Forestry occupied 8818 Courthouse Road from the early 1960s until April 15th, April of 2015. They used the building as an office, a shop, and for storage. They did all of this zoned R2 for more than 30 years. Now that we've purchased the building, we cannot use the space for the same purpose, an office, shop, and storage. The zoning department claims on their county website that development and construction in the county meets all applicable federal, state, and zoning laws. But does that only apply, does that not apply when a state-funded department occupies a building? It only seems to apply when an occupant is a tax-paying business. Tonight, we ask for consideration for a non-conforming use variance for 8818 Courthouse Road. Thank you.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak?
Is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak? Seeing none?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now we are at board reports and the first item listed there is the Germana Community College Board appointment for which there were two names put forward by supervisors.
We want to table this until Mr. Ross gets here or are there, are both applicants here or both, I was going to say potentially?
See Reverend Shaw. I don't, do not see Braswell.
We have to make a determination? We're going to select one or are we going to have them speak or give a?
That would be at the pleasure of the board.
How do we determine which one to select? That's why I said we should at least wait until Mr. Ross, because he nominated one and can we, let's table this until Mr. Ross.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to table until Mr. Ross is here. Our, is Mr., I believe that Mr. Yakapowski, it was Mr. Braswell? Is Mr. Braswell here tonight?
No, I did not ask him to come as we are just voting on.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, because I thought, no, my, my consideration was if they were both here, just to have them come up and describe some things that they thought about. But I, I do know that if they're not both here, then it would be unfair to one candidate than the other one. So, that's, but I do want to wait until David comes, because I think it was his nomination. So I will make a motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table until later in the meeting when Mr. Ross gets here. Call a question.
Then brings us to board reports.
Mr. Yakapowski?
Thank you. The only thing that I have is to report back to the board that on Friday, I was able to go to the ribbon cutting ceremony for the VA clinic that is now in Spotsylvania. It was a very nice ceremony, had a nice tour of the new clinic, which is at 14, or I'm sorry, 10401 Spotsylvania Avenue. It's above the ER center, the Mary Washington ER Center that's there on the third floor. Very nice time, very large facility. It's double the current one that they have in the city. And just want to let everybody know that we're going to be doing what we can to drive traffic there, to let folks know that it's, it's there and it's open for business. And like I said, it's, it's a large facility and they can, they can do an awful lot there. So I was very, very happy that I could be there and just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Mrs. Bula?
Yeah, I've got two things I wanted to cover. First of all, I had the pleasure of attending the Massaponix High School Undergraduate Awards Program last Wednesday. And as most of you know, I don't have any kids in school. So this was kind of a, a neat opportunity for me to see what goes on there. And the reason that I want to report on it is I was so impressed with the amount of students who were called forward with straight A averages in their grade. It seemed like half the school came forward and they, they were named individually, but this says a lot. We, we say a lot about our schools, but to me, this shows me that we're doing a doggone good job here in Spotsylvania County and, and I'm proud of them. Secondly, those of you who travel the Route 1 corridor down by Mud Tavern will notice things are almost finished. Went through there today and it's really looking good. I see traffic moving through the intersection a lot better now and it should be all totally complete by next week. So enjoy if you come down to Thornburg. Thank you.
Mr. Trampy?
No report at this time.
Mr. Benton?
No report at this time.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do. First of all, let me see, it was the last, a week ago today that we finally got the final Federal Transportation Authority giving us approval for our third line on the VRE station all the way to Hamilton Square. So I can report to this board that the VRE station is completed, the third rail is completed too. So I appreciate all the support. I thanked all the localities that assisted us, which was the PRTC program, so them and all those surrounding counties on VR assist us in that, and I do appreciate that very much. So that is one project that I think this board and all the other boards can be proud of, and we started that almost six years ago. The other thing I'd like to do for our citizens out there that like racing and everything, I just want to pass this on to them, that this is a four-day weekend, obviously Memorial Day. So at Dominion Speedway, there's a lot of free things that are happening for our citizens. So on Friday, we have free practice from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM and that is free to the public. Saturday, opening practice, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM is free to the, and then on Sunday, they're going to have K&amp;N practice at 3:30 to 500, and I'll follow up with that in just a second. And qualifying is at 7:00 PM. Also on Sunday, the Indianapolis 500 will be shown on the big screen at noon time and the Coke 600 from Charlottesville at 6:00 PM. Those are all free to, to, to the public, but putting Spotsy on the map, I will say that on Monday, May 30th, Dominion Raceway is hosting NASCAR's K&amp;N Pro Series, and that will be nationally televised on NBC Sports Network. So they will see it. This will be a national broadcast airing on Thursday, June 2nd at 6:00 PM. It says this event will bring drivers, crew members, and fans to Spotsylvania from around the mid-Atlantic region. This is the first of what will become the track's annual Memorial Day Classic. They do invite all the board members, as they did on opening day, and they also thank us all for their support for that track that we have out there. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and the chair has no report.
As Chairman, that brings us to public hearings, first of which is R15007 Goodwin Cove LLC, which is in the Livingston District.
Floor computer please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to rezone approximately 130 acres of property located off of Monrovia Road, less than half a mile east of the Zachary Taylor Highway. For you is the existing zoning map with the parcel outlined in teal. The current zoning is resort agricultural and resort residential, which has a buyright development potential of 11 single-family lots. The applicant is requesting to rezone to planned residential rule three to allow for 35 single-family lots. Here's the aerial photo as well. The site is located adjacent to agricultural land, including acreage that is located, or that is designated within the county's Ag Forestal District and a disposition to other existing lakefront communities, including Runny Mead and Kelly's Landing. The planning commission held a public hearing on April 20th and voted to recommend approval of the request, and staff also recommends approval based on the project's consistency with the comprehensive plan and the existing development as well. Here is a sheet out of the generalized development plan. This is a large tract of land that has historically operated as a dairy farm. Does include an early 20th century farmhouse and outbuildings. These structures will be demolished as part of this request. The Department of Historic Resources reviewed this and noted that there was nothing uncommon about these and didn't recommend any preservation of any type. The requested PRR3 district will allow for up to 46 lots, however, the applicant has proffered to limit the number of lots to only 35. These lots will be accessed by public streets from three separate points on Winway Drive, all terminating into cul-de-sacs. The lots range from one acre to two acres in size, with the one-acre lots being on the lake and the two-acre lots being non-lakefront. The applicant is committed to a minimum house size of 2,500 square feet and all lots will be served by private wells and individual septic systems. The applicant has completed a number of studies to confirm the location of the drainfields as well as the availability of water. That was a concern that was brought up at the community meeting. These studies did confirm that there would not be a water supply issue with this development. The lots are clustered towards the lake and over 59 acres are preserved in open space. The open space is predominantly located on the south side of the development, which provides a significant buffer adjacent to the agricultural land. Pedestrian trails, a boat ramp area with open and covered boat slips, sanitation facilities and parking will be provided at the lakefront area for the community, located generally in this area. There will also be a dry hydrant installed at the boat ramp that will include emergency access for fire rescue. This will benefit not only this community, but the existing communities as well. The Goodwin Cove Development will add approximately 333 new trips to Winway Drive in Monrovia. The most recent counts on this segment of Monrovia is 715 vehicles per day and 130 vehicles per day on Winway Drive. Based on the existing conditions and the estimated traffic generated by this development, the impact will be minimal. VDOT has noted that improvements will be needed to Winway Drive. Winway is very hilly and for those access points to meet site distance requirements, there is going to have to be grading to Winway and other improvements to meet those requirements. And those, that engineering and those details can be fleshed out at the site plan process. The applicant has included proffers with their application, including to develop in conformance with the GDP, and as I noted, they have limited the number of lots to 35. The applicant has proffered a cash contribution in the amount of $6,208 for a total of $217,296. The applicant has proffered to dedicate right-of-way along both Monrovia Road and Winway Drive. They've also proffered a right-of-way from the cul-de-sac to Carter Lane. This is to meet VDOT's secondary street acceptance requirements. The applicant has proffered pedestrian trails, a boat ramp, emergency access to fire rescue, all of which will be maintained by the homeowners association. They have restricted the length of boat docks to 40 feet on lots nine, 10, and 11. This proffer is in response to safety concerns that were raised at the community meeting. This particular area of the lake is quite narrow and there was a concern that docks extending into the lake would create an even greater safety concern and choke point. So they have restricted the length of those docks. The applicant has proffered a minimum square footage of 2,500 square feet, and they have also committed to provide real estate disclosures to new home buyers in respect, related to the proximity of the development to active agricultural operations. This first table reflects the county's estimated impact of the development on capital facilities. This development will be served by Fire Rescue Station nine, which currently has capacity, as do the schools. Keep in mind, this capacity is based on the existing conditions and just this approved, or just this development before you tonight, not approved development. The capital facilities impact is calculated on those units above and beyond the property's buyright yield, which in this case is 24 units. The total impact is $619,320. As I noted, the applicant has proffered a total cash contribution of $217,296. That does leave a difference of over $400,000. Staff completed a fiscal impact analysis based on the county's model, using comparable developments that the applicant did put forth. Those included Windermere, Kelly's Landing, Rockland Estates, South Wind Shores, and Sunrise Bay. Based on the average assessed value and using the minimum square footage of 2,500 square feet, the county's model projects that the development will produce an annual fiscal benefit in the amount of 24,000, over $24,000. This would offset the impact on capital facilities within 17 years, which is in line with the board's 30-year policy. This development will create 67 construction jobs and produce a total economic benefit of over $11.5 million. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Skinner?
Go back to the school slide, probably three or four back. Okay, so how many students are they looking to enroll in the high school out there at Spotsylvania?
With this development, it would generate, it's estimated to generate six high school students.
Only six high school students? Okay. And you got 34, did we say 34 lots?
35 lots.
35 lots, six. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? The applicant has 10 minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Dave McElhenney. I'm an engineer with the firm of urban engineering, representing Goodwin Cove LLC. Pleased to have this opportunity to present. I would like to be as brief as I can. Kimberly, as always, has done an excellent job, so I will try to go through these slides quickly and just focus on what has not been discussed. So if we go to the slides, that'd be great. Okay, this is a great context map that shows the proximity of our site in relationship to the lake. This is actually taken from the county's comp plan, and as Kimberly's indicated, the proposed subdivision is in line with the county's comp plan. We are proposing a total of 35 units, which again is well below the comp plan density. What I'd like you to do is, is now just kind of start where we were. This was an existing farm that's had livestock grazing on the property for several years. Talking to Mr. Goodwin, the history of this site at least goes back to the 1800s. So as we developed a land plan that would be as sensitive to the property as possible, we really, as we do with many projects, will just start with the existing topography, understand where the drainage ways are, where the trees are, and move forward with a design that takes into consideration those items, but also wetlands. So I've brought the wetlands in. We've worked with consultants to really understand clearly where the sensitive areas on this site are. Because there are sensitive areas, we went ahead and secured a resource protection area mapping, which now comes up, which kind of shows the core components of what was critical from a preservation standpoint as we evaluated how we could really lay the project out, preserve trees, stay out of the sensitive areas to the extent possible. This is an overlay of the layout over top of some of those critical constraints associated with the design. And the part I really wanted to emphasize is, again, we're just trying to honor the land, not come in and clear-cut. A lot of the property is already opened, so we really want to try to preserve those trees, preserve those wetlands, and stay out of the RPAs. And we've been able to accomplish just that. Going back to the aerial that you saw, this is something which I'd like to kind of use as a starting point and emphasize, does this have the opportunity to point, Kimberly, this device? If you could just point to the upper area that's identified in red. We met with the communities back in 2015 and one of the We met with the communities back in 2015, and one of the major concerns that was raised by the Runnymede subdivision, if you could show where the Runnymede subdivision is, Kimberly, please. They had identified to us that there was somewhat of a bottleneck, if you will, in the lake, and they were worried that the boat traffic going through there may interfere with proposed docks associated with this community. We went ahead, listened, did a depth analysis and determined that we could go ahead and get sufficient depth, even if we had a very dry year, by not extending those docks any more than 40 feet. So we have proffered to restrict the dock lengths in that location circled in red to no more than 40 feet, again, to be responsive to the concerns raised by the community. Additional highlights, I think, that are important to recognize that this community brings forth, which is going to be something really special, and what that is, is the boat slips, the community amenity area, which is going to be made up of a ramp for access into the lake. It's going to be the dry hydrant, as Kimberly had indicated. That's going to be made available, obviously, not just this community, but to fire and rescue, to serve the adjacent communities. To the best of my knowledge, there's no dry hydrant anywhere in proximity to this particular site, so that was something important to fire and rescue. In addition, there's going to be a covered boat slips for all of those lots that do not have direct water access. We do show that in this exhibit. Again, this will be done, though, certainly in line with Dominion Powers requirements as well. But we're not relying on any of the adjacent communities' facilities. We're providing all the facilities on-site to, again, serve this community. This is a very important slide. There's been questions raised with regards to some of the site distances that are currently existing at the intersection with the existing public roadway. And when you take a look at Winway Drive, it does have some humps in it. And when you make a left into Runnymede, you experience that somewhat, but you really experience it more if you're making a right out of Runnymede. The community raised the concern that, hey, we may have some intersection site distance issues. Originally, this road was designed to 25 miles per hour when we did our initial layout. In working with VDOT, listening to the community, we conducted a speed study. We found that people are driving much quicker than 25 miles an hour. There's no posted speed limit on the roadway today. Based on that information, we have now gone back through and evaluated what's going to be necessary in order to make Winway Drive a safe roadway. And not just for our proposed intersections, but also for the Runnymede intersection. Those speeds varied anywhere from 41 miles an hour to 51 miles an hour. And working with VDOT, they've asked us to design those at 45 and 55 miles an hour accordingly. Small country road, but we're looking at it very conservatively. What that means really is that that roadway will now be redesigned and reconstructed, approximately 1,300 feet of it, to rectify the existing site distance problems. The applicant has agreed to do that work. We've agreed to make sure that it is in accordance with VDOT requirements, and we've already done some preliminary engineering, and we will be demonstrating that as we go through, if we go through, the final site plan review process, both with the county as well as with VDOT. But I think that's something really I wanted to stress because there were concerns raised by Runnymede, and we're going to be out there improving that roadway. Secondly, we just came across a recent piece of correspondence from VDOT in response to a concern raised by a citizen in the Runnymede community with regards to the intersection site distance at the Monrovia Winway Drive intersection. If you could just point that, Kimberly, so the board members know what we're talking about. A member of the Runnymede community suggested that that may have a problematic site distance issue as well. We were unaware of that. That's really not an intersection that we're really tying into with any of our proposed roadways. However, VDOT has responded, that they are going to investigate that intersection, and if indeed there are site distance issues, they're going to go ahead and address those such that that intersection can be made safe within the allowances of the available right-of-way that's out there today. Another one of the attributes and amenities associated with this project is the overwhelming amount of open space associated with this project. We have almost 60 acres of open space that will be dedicated as just that, available to the community. In addition, we are proposing over 2,000 linear feet of trails throughout the site. During the review by the planning commission and their consideration, a question was raised as to whether or not those trails would be made available to the public. Some folks from the Runnymede community right now walk on the existing roadway, and we said, no reason to do that anymore. We're putting 2,000 feet of trail. We've got another 6,000 feet of very wide roadway. Our roads are going to be public roads at 24-foot width. Winway Drive exists today only around 18 feet. So there's going to be plenty of opportunities for them to walk in our community. Our roads are public, and we're making our trails available to them as well. This slide is just simply in response to concerns raised by the Kelly's Landing community. At one point, there was consideration of a tie-in of our roadway to Carter Lane. I wanted to make sure it was clearly understood that that connection has been removed. Carter Lane, as you may know, is a private road. We do not have permission to tie in. Community was concerned about it. We follow the direction of the community as well as the planning commission, and that connection is not being made. This is still in accordance with VDOT requirements. And again, I will stress to you that VDOT has approved this application, again, pending their final review of the final engineering plan. This particular slide just again covers what Kimberly had alluded to with regards to the groundwater hydrology study that was done to evaluate the availability of satisfactory wells to serve this. There was a study that was prepared and submitted back in 2015. The conclusions were that this site has water capacity available to it, and they do not anticipate any negative impacts to existing groundwater wells adjacent to this project.
Sir, your 10 minutes has elapsed.
I will conclude with the next slide, if I have permission from the chairman to do so. Thank you. So lastly, I think that what I really want to stress to you is that this is going to be a very high-quality community that's 35 lakefront lots, as well as lake-accessible lots. We are doing dramatic improvements to Winway Drive to improve that condition, to make it safe, not only for the existing community, but certainly for our community as well. We're adding a boat ramp and a dry hydrant that's available to fire and rescue. We've got almost 60 acres of open space, and again, in response to the community, there is no Carter Lane connection. I respectfully ask for your support for this application in line with the planning commission, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Skinner?
Yes, sir. On your Winway Lane, you said you're doing 1,300-foot worth of improvements because of the line of sight?
That is correct.
Can you sort of tell us, is that additional entry lanes, exit lanes? What does that actually mean?
What that means is that, right now, that roadway, which existed prior to Lake Anna, has many up and down. It has a really severe vertical alignment associated with it. So it has these valleys and humps, and it's creating a problematic condition when it comes to tying in, because sometimes people are blinded when they're tying into that roadway because a car might be hidden in a valley. This improvement would basically go in and smooth that roadway. It would take those humps out. It would make that road vertically acceptable to VDOT requirements, such that the intersection site distances, and not to get into too much engineering speak, but also stopping site distances for those that are traveling on Winway Drive, they're not going to have a blinded condition anymore. The condition will be rectified and resolved with these improvements.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. Stibula?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not necessarily a requirement for you as a developer there, but what is the distance between where you anticipate having the 40-foot boat ramps between there and the opposite shore? Do you have any idea?
Yes. It's around 400 feet at its narrowest spot, from our shoreline to the shoreline on the opposite side of the lake, at the bottleneck point.
And I believe that's currently then a no-wake zone?
That area is not a no-wake zone. People are going at greater speeds than just wake speed.
I would, when you go by building those boat ramps, this could become an issue, changing that to a no-wake zone. So make your potential buyers aware of that.
We will, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had a quick one for you. On the proffers, so could we go over the proffers again real quick? So 6,200 per, so what are we doing to offset? What is the county's per unit right now?
The adopted policy amount for single-family detached is $25,805 per unit.
So what are we doing to offset what the guidelines are and what has been proffered?
The board's 30-year policy states that if the fiscal revenues generated by a development offset those impacts, then it is viewed favorably. In this instance, the comparable developments that were used in our fiscal impact analysis, the average value of the homes were $395,518. And when we put that into our county's model, that produced an annual fiscal benefit of $24,096, and so that offset that deficit within 17 years.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open the public hearing.
There are two citizens signed up to speak. The first speaker is Alan Lassiter, followed by Frank Brodessen.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alan Lassiter. I live at 15512 Sunset Harbor, Mineral, Virginia, but it's in Spotsylvania County. I'm in the Livingston District. I'm also the land use chairman for the Lake Anna Civic Association, LACA. And we spoke at the public hearing during the planning commission early in last month, and basically presented the same information tonight. One is that we don't support or oppose developments. That's not what LACA does. What LACA does is try to work with the developers and the county staff as early in the process as we can, and in this case, that was February of 2015, to look at the areas that we are concerned about, any development. And they are lake safety, shoreline stability, sewer and water, open space, and stormwater management. Well, I think you've heard either from Kimberly or from Dave on each one of these, but I will tell you this, that we were very concerned about the narrow condition of the lake there, and it's in a curve, too. So it's got two things going for it, against it. And we did ask the developer to limit the dock, and they came back with a 40-foot limitation. We really appreciated that. I think that'll help a lot. And that is in the proffers that Dave mentioned. Shoreline stability, that is, as far as I understand, a coming thing that we'll be working with the county and the developer. It's not needed for rezoning, but it will be for construction plans, and that is the shoreline plan, the shoreline stability plan. And we've seen several of those in the past. They've been very good plans, and we're looking forward to working with that one when it comes available. Sewer and water, again, Dave already mentioned that. The studies that were done in 2014 indicated that there will be individual wells and septic individual homeowners, and so there was deemed to be no problem with either sewer or water on those lots. Last issue was stormwater management. The indication at the time was, due to the tremendous open space of this property and the large lots, there should not be a necessity for any stormwater management facilities. However, the consultant and the county planners convinced me that they will look at that during the construction phase process, and if there are any issues there, they can be addressed at that time. So we have several things we want to keep working with on this project. We're not finished tonight. So with that, thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, I'm Frank Brodessen. I live on West Felipe Place in Lee's Park, which is in the Battlefield District. Tonight, I hope to learn and understand the rationale of your 30-year payoff policy that you use to justify funding growth. Once again, a developer is offering proffers that are less than the development's costs of capital facilities. If approved, you will again ignore your recently approved proffer guidelines, which I am told essentially meet new state requirements. We know which costs are specifically attributable. Let me illustrate. When I moved to Spotsylvania and bought in Lee's Park, I received all existing benefits that the county offered, as will the upscale buyers in Goodwin's Cove. Then every Lee's Park buyer has paid it forward as our proffers funded Spotsylvania Parkway and considerably more. Consider how that benefited taxpayers. I'm told the Parkway came in at less than the $28 million profit estimate, so I suggested or so I asked about a $24 million bond issue. Per the finance department, a $24 million bond to build a Parkway would have initially added four cents to our tax rate. Now it's about 13 years later, and with an improved economy and rising assessments, it will probably be about two cents. You agonized over spending two cents in this year's budget. Without our proffers, two miles of Spotsy Parkway would have added 20 years of taxation and not be paid for another seven years. Now with Goodwin's Cove, or excuse me, but with repayment of the Lee's Park, excuse me, with repayment of the 30-year policy, with the 30-year policy, Spotsy Parkway wouldn't be paid for until the 2050s. Please explain why that is fiscally prudent? Please tell us why taxpayers should pay for specifically attributed costs created by Goodwin Cove? Why we should then wait for 17 years after 35 homes are built for their taxes to repay Spotsylvania? I don't understand the two policies. I believe the board should follow their newly-approved proffer guidelines and that all new residents should pay their fair share of growth. I urge the board to start tonight to follow the proffer guidelines you have approved. This is a wonderful project, and I oppose it only until Goodwin Cove buyers pay their fair share. Thank you.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak.
Did anyone that did not sign up wish to speak?
Mary Lou Collier, Mr. Skinner's district. I have two questions for clarification. The proposed roadway improvements, what is the anticipated completion date? Or actually, when is it going to start and be completed? Is it by one year, five years, 10 years, or completion of the 35 lots? And two, the pedestrian trails, it was noted was open for countywide. What about the boat dock access and usage of the boat docks? Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak that did not sign up? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I think the applicant has five more minutes. I think the applicant has five more minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief on my response. Alan brought up a piece of information I really did not cover in my presentation, which is this applicant is in the process of preparing and will be submitting shoreline protection plans along the entire frontage of the property. As many of you may know, Lake Anna has a serious erosion problem. This applicant has taken upon himself and other portions of the lake to provide thousands of feet of shoreline improvements. That is no, that is a very costly undertaking, and in many cases, he has not been mandated to do so. He's done this on his own to protect his property. This is something which I think is very important, because as we have this discussion with capital facilities, recognizing that the capital facilities number is really not made up until the seventeen-year timeframe, I think it's important to realize that there are other elements associated with this development that are going to benefit this community but as well as the lake. And that one item that already that we've just talked about is that shoreline. That very well could be a seven-digit undertaking to improve that condition, and that means lining the majority of the frontage that we have on the lake with riprap, many of which is placed from a barge onto the property. I think when it comes to doing the capital physical analysis, the numbers that were used by the county, and I completely understand, so we're very conservative. We anticipate the value of these homes to be anywhere from, the lakefront homes anywhere to be from eight hundred to one-point-two million. This is going to be an exclusive community. If you take a look at one of the other communities Mr. Hunter is marketing right now, those lots are going to be just with lots, not including the houses at roughly half a million dollars. That number is going to be not seventeen years, but considerably less. The other piece of information related to this topic is the undertaking associated with improving Winway Drive is going to be several hundred thousand dollars. We are basically rebuilding a significant portion of that roadway. We're not widening it. We are changing the vertical elevation, and we are going to do that in such a manner that that's going to be, for intents and purposes, a brand-new roadway. It's not an easy undertaking, because some of the land that's right adjacent to us, most of the land, we do not control. So we need to move all those improvements in the direction of Goodwin Cove. But at the end, certainly that's going to be a benefit not just to Goodwin Cove, but also to the Runnymede community. And then lastly, these are going to be vacation and weekend homes. That's what we're finding in the market. We don't expect that there's going to be much generation when it comes to schoolchildren. Obviously, there's no guarantees on that, and we recognize that. We want to certainly be below that thirty-year timeframe. That's why we committed to the twenty-five hundred. We think, again, the houses will be much greater than that. So when you take a look at the components of how we generated that capital facilities contribution, we paid full amounts except for the school contribution. That's where the delta is. Thank you, and again, I request a favorable decision in line with the planning commission. Happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioner McLaughlin, Mr. Skinner.
Yeah, just, could you talk about that road improvements? Are you planning to do that? When do you plan to make those road improvements prior to your, as you're putting those roads in, and we've got a family living in there? Will those road improvements be made at that time?
Absolutely. The road will not be open to the public until Winway Drive is made safe. We will not be able to get rups, we will not be able to get access into, a property owner will not be able to move into a house until VDOT has been satisfied that that roadway has been constructed to meet their requirements, and so that is going to be an initial phase improvement.
Thank you.
Any other comments? With that, do we have a motion to?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion? All right, call a question.
Four yes, with Mr. Yakubowski, Dr. Trampy, and Mr. Benton voting no.
Mr. Taylor, can we go back to the Germana discussion?
Certainly. I mean, that's at the board's pleasure. There were two names put forward, Reverend Shaw by Mr. Ross, Baron Braswell by Mr. Yakubowski, and this is for appointment to the Germana Community College Board.
Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Sure. I see Pastor Shaw's in the audience, and I don't know if all the board members have had a chance to look at his resume, but briefly, I'll just go through a little, a couple of highlights, and then I would ask if the board's all right for Pastor Shaw to come up and tell us why he feels he's uniquely qualified for this position with Germana. But I noticed he's got a master's degree with a three-point-four-five GPA, a BA degree with, graduated summa cum laude with a three-point-nine-six out of a four-point-oh. I think that's pretty impressive for anybody. And then I also noticed that he's attended a couple of junior colleges himself in his resume, and so he's got junior college experience, and I know he is very familiar with Germana Community College, as he, I believe it's where he worships. And finally, I think he lives very close to there. So with the board's pleasure, if we could bring Pastor Shaw up.
Is there any objection?
Mr. McLaughlin, I just don't think that it's fair to have one person show up without the other one having no prior notice of doing such a thing. I would have invited Mr. Braswell, but I just figured that this was, as a typical appointment would go, we see the resumes, we look them over, we vote, and then we go from there.
What's the desire of the board?
Mr. Chair, as I said earlier, when Mr. Ross was not here, I do think it's only fair that if someone, that candidate gets a chance to speak, then the other one should, and unfortunately, I don't think Mr. Yakubowski was aware, or Mr. Braswell was aware, that we were going to ask this, because it is somewhat out of the ordinary from what we did last time.
All right. Well, it's at the pleasure of the board.
Okay. Anything else you want to say?
No.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to talk about your nomination, or just vote?
Well, I mean, if anybody here doesn't know, Mr. Braswell, he is chairman of the school board, very involved in our education system, has been for many, many years, and I believe that he would be a good fit to not only represent the county, but then also have the school system angle that he brings to see whatever type of coordination that could go on. And so I would ask that the board would approve Mr. Braswell to this position. Thank you.
So do we have a motion for either? Mr. Tumula.
A motion to approve Mr. Braswell.
Okay.
Four yes, with Mr. Ross, Mr. McLaughlin, and Mr. Benton voting no.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, we're next public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Next public hearing is R-15009, Ronnie and Paulette East, Chancellor Self Storage, which is in the Salem District.
Floor computer, please. Thank you. This is a request to rezone four-point-six-two acres from commercial two, office one, and office two, to commercial three, to allow for a mini warehousing facility. The subject property consists of thirteen separate parcels with frontage on both Wright's Lane and Old Plank Road. The C-two and O-one zone portion of the property, which fronts on Wright's Lane, right here, and a small portion here with frontage on Old Plank Road, was the result of a rezoning in 2009 for a thirty-four thousand square foot commercial building, and the zoning prohibited the property from developing as a mini warehouse facility. The O-two zoned property, which only has frontage on Old Plank Road, was the result of a rezoning as well, and it was for office use, and it was approved with direct access to Old Plank Road. The applicants are requesting a rezoning to create a consistent C-three zoning for all of the parcels to allow for the mini warehouse facility. Existing development along Wright's Lane and Plank Road is commercial to the west and east with a few residential properties remaining just before Five Mile Fork. The existing development on Old Plank Road remains residential in this area. However, the future land use map in our comprehensive plan does designate this entire area here for employment center. The planning commission held a public hearing on May 18th and heard concerns from residents with respect to the proposed access on Old Plank Road. The planning commission did recommend approval of the request, but also recommended that the proposed access on Old Plank be restricted for emergency use only. Staff is recommending approval of the application as proposed. The proposal includes thirteen storage buildings with the main access to the property from Wright's Lane, right here, and a secondary access from Old Plank Road, both of which will be gated. The main access will be open during normal business hours, and the gate on the Old Plank roadside will be closed and only accessible to customers with some sort of keypad or passcode access only. The applicant has proffered to construct a right turn lane on Old Plank Road to prevent any potential backups that may occur from accessing the gate, and this was something that was brought up at the community meeting that the applicant is addressing. The entire site will be fenced with wrought iron fencing predominantly along the Wright's Lane frontage, this is in the H-Cod district, and solid white vinyl fencing along the sides of the project and along the Old Plank Road frontage. The applicant is requesting a modification to the required transitional screening requirements as part of their application. These screening requirements are designed to buffer a property from a more intense use from a lesser intense use. In this situation, the code would require a twenty-five-foot buffer to the existing residential uses, which are primarily located on this side. The applicant has proposed to reduce the buffer area to twelve feet in width with a six-foot solid vinyl fence and no landscaping. That was at the request of the property owners, except along these three adjacent properties where it will be the twelve-foot buffer with the fence and landscaping. As I mentioned, all those adjacent property owners have provided their affidavits agreeing to these modifications. Staff has not noted any concerns with the modification, particularly since the adjacent property owners are in agreement, and similar modifications have been made with other developments, particularly when the future land use is the same, and in this case, it is for employment As part of the applicant application, the applicant has put forth several proffers, one to develop in conformance with the GDP up to a maximum of seventy-two thousand square feet for the buildings. The applicant has proffered to dedicate right-of-way along both Wright's Lane and Old Plank Road. They have proffered to construct that right turn lane on Old Plank Road subsequent with the installation of an access point. The applicant has indicated they intend to phase this development, constructing those front eight buildings with the main access on Wright's Lane with phase one, and then with phase two, completing the development with those additional buildings in that access. So there's nothing in this proffer document that would restrict him from doing that phased plan, and there's nothing that would require the construction of that right turn lane until the Old Plank Road access was installed. The applicant has proffered fencing materials, which will be the wrought iron or the solid white vinyl fencing, with a minimum height of six feet and a maximum height of eight feet, and they have also restricted the building height to no more than twenty-five feet. The C-three district allows up to seventy-five. As I mentioned, the residential community has expressed concerns with the access on Old Plank Road. That approved O-two rezoning with a frontage on Old Plank Road, that did include a direct access. Staff has estimated that an office use would generate an additional fifty-five trips per day, and that is based on a very conservative estimate of a five-thousand-square-foot office building. A building twice that size could be, could fit on this amount of property in addition to other O-two uses that would potentially generate even more traffic. The applicant has proffered to install the right turn lane. The access will be restricted by the passcode, key code gated access on Old Plank Road. Our traffic engineer has estimated that twenty-eight trips will be generated by the proposal using that Old Plank Road access, and that is less than what is currently approved on the property. So with that, staff continues to support the proposal as proposed with that access on Old Plank Road. The county's traffic engineer, Dan Cole, is here to answer any specific questions you may have on our traffic analysis, and I believe the applicant has some additional information as well for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Trampy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The twenty-eight trips per day, is that just on Old Plank Road, or is that both entrances?
That is just on Old Plank Road.
And I guess it's not broken down as far as where folks are coming from, which direction, and so forth. Because I guess my feeling is if someone is coming from the, is traveling east on Route Three, they're going to use the Wright's Lane entrance. If they're traveling west on Route Three, they're going to take Gordon Road directly to Old Plank and not have to use Dickinson or Dogwood as a cut-through. If they're traveling east on Harrison Road, they would turn directly onto Old Plank without having to cut-through. So the only folks that I think would, might need, or might be tempted to use those roads as a cut-through would be those traveling west on Harrison Road, but I guess we don't have an estimate of how many of those twenty-eight trips would be accounted for.
We don't have that breakdown, but our traffic engineer did agree that it was unlikely that that would be used as a cut-through, so I think it's a fair assessment.
And, Dan, we had talked about signs at Harrison and Dickinson and Harrison and Dogwood, about no-through trucks or no-heavy vehicles, something along that line. Do you know what the cost to the county would be for putting up signs of that nature?
I don't know. There's conditions that have to be met first before we can put the signs up. Some are pretty straightforward. One's a formal request has to be made to VDOT. The county has to hold some sort of public hearing, and there must be alternative truck routes available, which we meet that condition, because you'd have Gordon Road, Plank Road, or Old Plank Road, any one of those. And then there has to be an evaluation of the safety, accidents, and vehicle composition on the roads where you're saying as the alternative roads, and that one's pretty straightforward, too. And the road that where you're putting the no-signs has to be considered a residential street, and that one's obviously met, too. As far as the cost, I really don't have an estimate on the cost. I'm looking at probably, you know, a couple hundred dollars, something like that.
That's all I had at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, you said this no-through trucks has me interested, because we have one. I thought it goes from one street to another street, okay? And if there's any, any alternative route between those two points, you can still put no-through trucks up there, but they won't get violated if they can get off that road between those two points.
That's correct, yeah. The issue, I guess, with the no-truck signs is really going to be enforcement. I mean, you know, it's difficult for probably the sheriff to be out there enforcing no-trucks on a, you know, on a residential road like that. I don't know how many.
Well, you know, I would back that as far as through residential. I mean, that's no doubt about that. My other question is on the two roads, Old Plank Road and Wright's Lane are the two entrances, that's correct? Is this a twenty-four-hour access, or is there times? I know a lot of them have nine o'clock, and that's it. They, or maybe during summer hours, a little bit later because of the light, but is this a twenty-four access on both roads, the entrances? a twenty-four access on both roads, the entrances? And is there any way, and my point is, if Old Plank Road has a problem with those, is there a chance that maybe one access would be left open at a longer time or perhaps then enclose the one road earlier in the day or something of that nature?
It is not my understanding that there's any time restriction to the facility. The gates will be closed and then customers could access those, but we could ask the applicant to confirm that.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other comments? Mr. Bennett.
On the access to Old Plank, it's like we see with VDOT when they've constructed a turn lane. Usually by the time they construct it and traffic gets on it, it's already way too short. How many vehicles could possibly be in line or totally off the roadway and what length will be provided for that access point?
Do you have the length, Kimberly?
That's my concern, because like it's Station Two and for just a fire department up off Courthouse Road, I can't even get the fire truck off, entirely off the road. I'm basically stopping and turning, and the turn lane isn't even the length of the fire truck.
The turn lane actually isn't really warranted off Old Plank. They're actually just, they're.
But it's being provided, though, right?
Right, it's being provided, yes.
And that was to get people off the road and?
Like a hundred feet, something like. So you're probably looking at. You're looking at least probably twelve, fourteen cars, somewhere's in that name, somewhere's in it.
Okay.
Any other comments? Any none? The applicant has ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Landon Davis. I live at thirteen oh six Kenmore Avenue in Fredericksburg, Virginia. I'm an attorney at Parrish Sneed Franklin Simpson, and I'm pleased to be here with you today presenting on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. East and their Chancellor Self-Storage Facility. A little bit in the way of background, Mr. and Mrs. East have lived and worked in Spotsylvania County for over forty years. Mr. East has owned a small business involved in the transportation of mobile homes in Spotsylvania County. He's operated that consecutively for thirty-eight years. Nine years ago, Mr. and Mrs. East invested in Spotsylvania County when they opened their Poe River Self-Storage Facility located in Thornburg, and that's a facility that's managed and operated by Mrs. East and I believe enjoys a fantastic reputation with the neighbors, with the community, with the county. In July of two thousand fifteen, the Easts again decided to invest in Spotsylvania County when they purchased the property that is before you today, that is the subject of the application before you today, and that's the property located between Old Plank Road and Wright's Lane. And when I say invested, I mean they really invested. They're not like a lot of developers who are contract purchasers and who wait to make sure they're going to get what they are asking for before making an investment. They've fully committed here, and they are the owners of the property. Also, unlike a lot of developers, the Easts didn't wait to improve the property. They bought the property from PNC, who obtained it out of foreclosure, and it consisted of thirteen parcels. On those thirteen parcels were ten houses and a store, all of which were vacant, all of which were boarded up, and all of which were uninhabited. And Mr. and Mrs. East went to work right away to improve the property, and I think anybody will tell you who's seen the property that it is, how it exists today is a vast improvement over what existed there just less than a year ago. As indicated by Ms. Pomato, the, Mr. and Mrs. East are proposing to build a self-storage facility on this property, and she did an excellent job of summarizing the main points of the self-storage facility, so I'll keep my remarks brief. What I really wanted to focus on was the concerns raised by several citizens at the Planning Commission meeting concerning the access on Old Plank Road. Mr. and Mrs. East have heard those concerns, and they engaged myself and Mr. Welford, Larry Welford with Welford Engineering, to take a look at those and see if we couldn't try to address some of those here tonight. After reviewing the written objections filed by the residents and after reviewing their comments at the Planning Commission, it seemed like really the concern was, there were three main concerns with the access, what I call the rear access, and that's the access on Old Plank Road. And those concerns were mainly focused around the traffic impact, and would this facility generate so much additional traffic that it would affect their quality of life, affect the safety of the residents, and so forth? And I think what is very important to keep in mind is that what the Easts are proposing is a vast improvement over what is currently approved on that property. And Ms. Pomato spoke about it briefly, but currently on the front side of the parcel bordering Wright's Lane, there's a thirty-four thousand square foot office building that's approved. Now, that doesn't have access to Old Plank Road, that only has access to Wright's Lane. However, in the back parcel, there's, I believe, six lots now, individual lots, and four of those lots are approved for, I believe, close to an eight thousand square foot office building. Now, staff estimated the number of trips at fifty-five per day, which they noted was a conservative estimate. If you look at the GDP from two thousand nine on that eight thousand square foot office building, the vehicles per day that are estimated is two-hundred-and-forty trips. And then if you look at VDOT's most recent summary and specifications, single-family homes, the other two lots are approved for single-family homes, and on average, a single-family home is anticipated to generate ten trips per day, so that's an additional twenty trips. So right now, you know, on the high end, there's two-hundred-and-sixty trips per day that are approved, that approved use on that property will generate. What the Easts are proposing will generate twenty-eight trips per day. That is a, you know, tenfold decrease in the number of trips per day that will be experienced on Old Plank Road. I also think it's important to mention, as Ms. Pomato touched on earlier in her presentation, there's various routes which these vehicles can go. There is North Dickinson Lane there, there's Dogwood Avenue, and there's both directions on Old Plank Road. So on any given street, you know, obviously this isn't a scientific estimate I'm about to give you, but I think it's fair to, you know, just divide it in four. It's seven to ten trips per day on any given street. And I think what we have to do also is keep this in context of the greater traffic impact on Old Plank Road. Again, VDOT in two thousand fifteen indicated that there were over forty-nine hundred trips per day on Old Plank Road. So with twenty-eight trips, what we're talking about is a less than one-half of one percent increase in the total number of trips, and that's, you know, opposed to what's currently approved on the property, which would generate two-hundred-and-sixty trips on the high end or a five-and-a-half percent increase, which is obviously far more significant. The second concern that seemed to be prevalent from the residents was this idea of a cut-through, and, you know, I think what maybe wasn't set forth well enough at the Planning Commission level was that these are gated and, you know, password-protected entrances to this, on this back entrance. It's not going to be open during daylight hours to through traffic. That's only going to be the front entrance. This is, this will be only an exit or an entrance for existing customers of the facility. People coming from Route Three or Wright's Lane will not have the opportunity to just cut through the facility in order to get to Harrison Road, and, you know, similarly, someone coming from Harrison Road will not have the opportunity to simply cut through the facility as a shortcut to get to Wright's Lane and eventually probably onto Route Three. So I think that's also very important to keep in mind. Finally, one final aspect that was raised by the concerned citizens was that the streets are narrow back there, and again, I think Ms. Pomato addressed this. This was raised at a community meeting, and Mr. and Mrs. East rose to the occasion and on their own initiative agreed to put in a, that turn lane, which the board knows is a considerable expense. This turn lane will allow, you know, prevent traffic from backing up. It'll also prevent customers of the facility from, you know, having to get out of their car or something on the street to enter their passcode, and it will greatly improve that Old Plank Road area around the rear entrance to the facility. So for all these reasons and based on the universal support that the facility has otherwise gotten from staff and from the Planning Commission and from the residents, we'd ask you to approve the facility with the rear access as proposed today. I'd also, on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. East and myself, thank you all for your service and your time, and also thank the residents of the community for their input and insight, which has been very helpful throughout this process. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Board, any questions? Mr. Skinner.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Any environmental controlled units out there, or are they just strictly regular storage units? Because there's some units around here that indoor storage units that are environmentally controlled, temperature-wise.
The climate-controlled units?
Yes.
I believe these are going to be all outside.
Oh, okay.
Storage units.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Mr. Stibula.
Yeah, just a comment. I was confused from the beginning about this cut-through, and I'm certainly glad to hear you explain that. I can't imagine a cut-through on a locked facility.
Yes, sir. I think that was probably our fault for maybe not explaining it well enough at the Planning Commission level, but I really don't see that being a concern. That would be a hard thing to accomplish.
I don't either. Thank you.
Any other comments? Just one quick one from me. They said the turn lane, so is it a right turn lane in? How, what is the turn lane?
The turn lane is a right turn lane in, and I believe there's also a little ways past, additional space past the exit if someone was taking a right turnout.
So if you're turning left into the facility, can you take a left in?
I believe, I believe you could take a left in, yes.
Okay, and there's enough room to pull in and then put your code in and move through?
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, open a public hearing.
Thank you.
The first citizen signed up to speak is Cheryl Duffy, followed by Louise Barre.
Good evening, Chairman, board members. My name is Cheryl Duffy. My address is one-two-oh-two-seven North Dickinson Drive. I'm in the Salem District. Let me first start by saying the cut-through that we have been talking about is our road. North Dickinson Drive will be used as a cut-through from Harrison to Old Plank to get into this facility, not cutting through the facility itself. That's not been our concern. We're very much opposed to the entry and exit at Old Plank Road for this reason. We've expressed their concerns from the very beginning. If they did not understand, I'm sorry, but I thought we had been very clear. The Planning Commission heard us very clearly. We're not talking about a cut-through through the facility. We're talking about a cut-through through North Dickinson Drive and Dogwood, but we happen to live on North Dickinson, my family and I. Okay, our safety is of big concern to us. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was seven to zero unanimously. They heard us. If you're familiar with our community, you already know the traffic running on Old Harrison and Old Plank, and boats, trailers, pickup trucks full of household equipment, they're going to be cutting through North Dickinson Drive and Dogwood Avenue to get to this facility. We have children on this road, it's a residential road, the road is very narrow. Come by tonight. It's, last night was trash night, people just getting home from work, trash cans are on the road, school buses are coming, cars are parked. We can't have additional, any traffic, and then let alone a boat, a pickup truck full of furniture, mattresses, that's how people move in and out of this facility. There was talk about banning heavy-duty vehicles. That's not what's going to be shooting through North Dickinson Drive and Dogwood Avenue. We're going to have the pickup trucks and that sort of thing, and if you had put some kind of restriction, we already have twenty-five mile-an-hour speed limit that nobody abides by, so who's going to enforce any other restrictions? That would put added burden on our county's police force. The entry-exit at Old Plank Road is going to be twenty-four-seven. Well, guess what? You don't pull up to the facility with your truck full of stuff, do you? You make the appointment and have a facility, have a storage unit, and then you come, and you come the backroads. You're going to be coming from the subdivisions back in the county, and you're going to avoid Route Three. You're going to hit Harrison, and you're going to shoot down through Dogwood and North Dickinson Drive into that facility. This is where we live. Please drive down that road. You cannot hardly, two cars can not hardly pass now without somebody pulling off onto the shoulder. Bring the additional vehicles with the, pulling trailers, RVs, boats, that's all going to be going into that facility. I know that you said prior there was office approved for this site. Well, that office would not be generating twenty-four-seven traffic through my neighborhood. It would have office hours, it would close on the weekends most likely. This is, people move on the weekends. I'm home on the weekends. Our kids are playing in the street or close to it. You know, this is our community. It is not what you saw earlier, that multimillion-dollar community, but it's still our community. Please appreciate that. I have lived here my whole life. This owner does not have two entrances at his other facility. Why does he need it here? He has got prime property on Route Three. He is sitting on Route Three. What more can he want? I'm only trying to protect our community. I'm not opposed to his facility. I welcome him. I know how good his facility looks at Thornburg, I have been there. I welcome him, but not this entry and exit at Old Plank Road. It is not necessary for him to succeed. He will succeed, and we wish him the best, and we urge you to take our safety and our community into consideration.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Louise Barre, followed by Gail Belcher.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. My name is Louise Barre. I'm another resident of North Dickinson Drive. I'm very, very close to Old Plank Road, one of the first houses on North Dickinson. And with the narrowness of our road and the narrowness of Old Plank Road, I think it's impossible to have that back entrance. It's, I'm not going to go on and on, you've heard enough. It's, it's a big concern for us, and Old Plank Road, if you're going to make a left turn into the facility, there is no way, it's going to hold traffic, definitely. There is not enough space. I understand the right lane to turn into the facility, but left will hold the traffic. So I'm just, it's a huge concern for the residents, it's an old community, it's narrow roads, and we need to have safety. So I would just ask you to please consider what the Planning Commission said, and if they want to keep the back entrance, to keep it for emergency services. Thank you very much.
Gail Belcher, followed by Cheryl Lamb.
Good evening. My name is Gail Belcher, and I live at sixty-five oh one Old Plank Road in Salem District, and my property, it backs directly onto the property at Wright's Lane. I'm here tonight to speak in the favor of the East application, including the access on the Old Plank Road. Yes, our neighborhood is a residential area, but as time has gone on, it's become less and less so on Old Plank Road. I believe the application for the proposed self-storage facility is more area-friendly alternative than the two-story office buildings, which could have had access onto Old Plank Road would have been. However, by restricting access from Old Plank Road, we'd be making it harder for potential customers to access the facility. If you're traveling west on Route Three, the crossover access to Wright's Lane was closed when the expansion along Route Three was completed. Anyone traveling west would have to make a U-turn at the light at Gordon Road, which is allowed, but with a yield to the right turn traffic from Gordon Road. As you may be aware, the intersection in Gordon Road and Route Three is under a lot of pressure from the newly expanded Gordon Road commuter parking lot and the traffic from Gordon Road. In the evening, traffic backs up onto Route Three to make the left-hand turn onto Gordon Road, and the Gordon Road traffic backs up to make that right-hand turn onto Route Three. By having to yield to the Gordon Road traffic to make a U-turn to go back to Wright's Lane, the traffic backup to the intersection is compounded. In addition, the upcoming opening of the new grocery store warehouse facility would add an extra layer of stress to that intersection. The proposed entrance off Old Plank Road is offset from North Dickinson, which would force traffic leaving the facility to make a left or right-hand turn onto Old Plank Road. Without direct access to North Dickinson, I believe fewer people would use the North Dickinson as a cut-through to Harrison Road. Dickinson as a cut-through to Harrison Road. If possible, I would like to see the hours set on the access to the facility instead of a twenty-four hour access. By restricting the access hours, it would cause less disruption and noise in the neighborhood at night. Mr. East has spoken with and tried to accommodate the wishes of the neighbors along Old Plank Road. I believe he will continue to do that. He has been a very good neighbor so far with improvements to the property. I hope you will faithfully consider Mr. East's application, including the access points on Old Plank Road and on Wright's Lane. Thank you.
Cheryl Lamb, followed by Doug Belcher.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Cheryl Lamb, and I live at 12,013 Dogwood Avenue. I'm also speaking for my mother, Carol Lamb, who is an adjacent homeowner living at 6417 Old Plank Road. We live in Salem District. We strongly support the rezoning request with two unrestricted points of access for numerous reasons. Our main reason for supporting the Old Plank Road entrance is safety. An access point on Old Plank Road would be safer for westbound Route Three customers to use. They could safely turn at either the Old Plank Road or Gordon Road traffic lights and not have to make a U-turn at Gordon Road to travel east to the Wright's Lane entrance. The proposed facility would generate a much lower twenty-eight trips per day, as opposed to the by-right estimated fifty-five trips per day. The proposed gated access entry from Old Plank would only be used by customers with passcode, which would limit traffic. The proffered right turn lane on Old Plank will reduce potential backups by customers accessing the facility. Also, the proposed Old Plank Road entry is not in line with North Dickinson Drive, but is further west, which would discourage cut-through traffic from Harrison Road. I attended the community meeting and the Planning Commission meeting regarding this request. The only people who spoke against the rezoning were residents of North Dickinson, who spoke primarily against the Old Plank Road entrance. I'd like to address some of the concerns stated in letters that they wrote to the Planning Commission. A concern was increased traffic was a safety concern, and they urged you to consider the responsibilities everyone has in ensuring the safety of children as well as residents in the community. Several people wrote that residents of North Dickinson park on the street daily, as well as their guests. I would dare to suggest that vehicles parked on the street should be caused for safety concern, not vehicles that may possibly travel North Dickinson to reach the Old Plank Road entrance. Vehicles parked on the road narrow the area in which to pass another vehicle safely. There's no indication that the estimated twenty-eight trips per day will travel North Dickinson. Vehicles also have the option of using Dogwood Avenue or Gordon Road to reach the Old Plank Road entry. I live on Dogwood Avenue, and our road must be wider because we have no issue passing another vehicle on our road. If there is such a safety concern by residents of North Dickinson, why haven't they had North Dickinson designated as a no-truck zone or even as a one-way street? Either of these options would address all of their safety concerns. Another concern they had was entry into the facility from Old Plank would allow after-hours entry to customers, which would interfere with their community and interrupt their sleep. The residents of North Dickinson are not adjacent landowners, but are actually across Old Plank Road. Customers using the facility would be driving on Old Plank Road if they even chose to use that entry point. They are only there to load or unload their belongings, which will not create unnecessary noise. Mr. East told me that there is an adjacent landowner within thirty feet of his Thornburg facility who's never had an issue with noise.
Ma'am, please sum up.
I'm summing up right now. Thank you. I urge you to vote to approve Ronnie and Paulette East's rezoning request with two unrestricted points of access. Thank you very much.
Doug Belcher?
My name is Doug Belcher. I live at 6501 Old Plank Road. I am an adjacent landowner and in the Salem District. I speak of just two different issues. One is that the U-turning on westbound traffic onto Gordon Road is going to endanger thousands of people a day, as opposed to the couple of, eight or so that might come down and, and turn off of Old Plank Road. I was a police officer for twenty-six years. I know what U-turns do. U-turns are dangerous, no matter where you put them. The other thing I'd like to speak really quickly is about Mr. East. I was there when the previous people were trying to build the two-story office building. The only contact they ever tried to make with us as homeowners was when I had to call the county to have them cut the grass that was waist-high. From the day that he has owned this property, he has cleaned it up. We've gotten rid of homeless people. We've had fires back there from people in those buildings living there. And he has come to my house at least a dozen times to ask me what my concerns are, or what he could do to make it better. I really hope that you all approve the two entrances to his property, and we get a good man that runs a business in Spotsylvania County. Thank you.
There are no other citizens sign up to speak?
Is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak? None. We'll close the public hearing, and the applicant has five minutes.
Thank you all again, and I'll be, I'll be very brief here. I would just like to reiterate again that right now, Mr. East owns a property that has a by-right use, that on the low end is estimated to be fifty-five vehicle trips per day on Old Plank Road, and on the high end is estimated to be two hundred and sixty vehicle trips per day on Old Plank Road. The use he's proposing at the high-end estimate is twenty-eight vehicle, vehicles per day on Old Plank Road. That is a significant decrease, either, you know, by half or a tenfold decrease, depending on which number you use. And while Mr. East and Mr. and Mrs. East understand and do appreciate the concerns raised by the residents of North Dickinson Lane, we'd ask the board not to punish, punish Mr. and Mrs. East for making what is actually the, one of the most low, one of the lowest-impact uses the county can have, especially with regards to traffic, and again, a significant decrease over what is currently allowed as a by-right project. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Mr. Trampi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any way to restrict the hours, at least as far as the entrance on Old Plank?
There is. That's a computerized gate that they could control, which hours it's accessible by, which hours the customers could access or exit the facility.
Are they willing to do that?
I'd have to speak with Mr. and Mrs. East, but I believe they would be open to a reasonable restriction on the hours of the facility, especially on the, if it was just over the weekends or, or something like that.
I see a nodding head behind you.
That's the man, that's the boss, so that's, that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Call the question.
Just one second, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify, is, was that a proffer that was made to restrict those hours, or is that just, you know, a commitment? I just wanted to be clear, so if it was an added proffer by the applicant, that they, they state whether it was or not.
I didn't ask for an added proffer.
Certainly, certainly, but they, they seem to indicate some, some commitments. I just wanted to ask them whether it was or was not for, for procedural reason.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you. Mr. Trampi, I too would like to at least have an idea of the hours of the restrictions, something of that nature. I mean, if we vote on this, we should at least have some guidelines, I would think. And I, I think, just to throw it out, there is a general question, is a little bit on the, well, we didn't interpret it that way. And it could become back and forth, as far as, when I say "we didn't interpret that way," the owners, Mr. and Mrs. East, against who's going to, who's going to sit down with them, I guess, is my question, and determine if they will shut the, the plant gate down for, you know, what is reasonable. I guess that's my question.
Right. And I just wanted to clarify that, Mr. Parent Trampi, I didn't interpret you as, as requiring that, but I, it did seem to be some indication with Mr. Davis, checking with his client. I just wasn't sure what they intended to do, that's all.
Mr. Davis, do you have something to say?
I just returned to try to answer any questions. I, I would just, I guess, request one or two minutes to speak with my client about that, and we could come up with a recommendation or a proposal to present to the board.
Mr. Benton, did you have a comment?
I just got, as far as the traffic, it seems like if we leave it open twenty-four hours, that twenty-eight trips will be spread out over a wide range of day and night. With that facility, the way it looked, to me, your vehicles are going into a gated area, circled by a fence. That's going to be noise abatement. Also, when you're in between those buildings, that's going to be noise abatement in itself. I do not think it's really going to be much of a consideration for noise. And like I say, you spread out the traffic in twenty-four hours, you know, twenty-eight vehicles is not that bad. I would, I would suggest you keep it as is, be quite honest. I think that's going to solve a lot of the issues that many people, you know, or a few people perceive. Just my opinion.
Yeah, again, at the risk of repeating myself, I think the traffic impact by the rear access is de minimis. I mean, it's going to be next to, I mean, as minimal as it can get, especially when you compare it to what's already approved by right on the property.
Quick question for you, if I may, Mr. Chairman, please. Is, is the area lit? Are all the areas lit? So, you, will you have lights? Because I'm very familiar with the North Thornburg one. It's a nice facility. Compliment on that, very nice-looking. Okay? Because I don't expect, to be honest with you, I think you won't see somebody at three o'clock in the morning pulling in, I would think, maybe once in a while. But there's going to be an area of time, eight o'clock in the morning or something like that, until nine o'clock at night, especially when we get into the winter seasons. It's just, I know you have emergencies, you got to take storage. I've got a storage unit, and I can go, but I'm limited myself at my storage unit until nine o'clock at night. And then, I'm not allowed back in there after nine. I open up at six, six o'clock in the morning the next time I can go into there. So, that, that's something I'm just saying to what my storage unit allows me to do, okay? That means that people from nine o'clock until six o'clock in the morning may not be driving through that one lane that people are interested in. So, I'm just throwing that out as an example.
Hey, Mr. Skinner, and I just, how about we take a five-minute recess? You can confer, and then we'll come back. So, we come back at ten till.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.